Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Asbury Park Complete Streets Forum. Moderator is by the League of Women Voters and hosted by Asbury Park Complete Streets. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I think Council Candidate Jesse Kendall could not be here, so by protocol, unfortunately, Angela Abes Anderson is not permitted to participate as a single candidate for City Council, although she's here tonight. The co-syrie reporter Carol Georgia Williams, who also was not, is also not able to be present. So we have, welcome Dan Harris, Nina Summerlin, and Ann Torrey, League of Women Voters moderators. And I'd like to introduce Ann right now.
All right. Thank you, Polly, and thanks to Asbury Park Complete Streets for organizing tonight's forum. As Polly noted, I'm a moderator from the League of Women Voters in Montauk County. The League is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to strengthening democracy by contracting the right to vote and empowering voters, and that's what we're doing tonight. In this election, you will be electing a member of the U.S. House of Representatives, two Montauk County Commissioners, County Sheriff, and closer to home, you'll be electing your Asbury Park Mayor and one member of the City Council. Before we get into introducing the candidates and my co-moderators here, I want to just go over the format with the audience, with you, the audience, so you know how it's going to work. We'll start with candidate opening statements. Did we lose Felicia?
Yeah.
Oh, she's here. Okay. Candidate opening statements will each be limited to two minutes. Then we'll move on to questions. You've submitted really excellent questions online and some tonight. We will not get to all of them, but we expect to have a good, robust question and answer period. The candidates will each have a minute to respond to questions. After questions, candidates will do, give closing statements. Those are also a minute. We, let's see, you see, we have a timekeeper in the front row, Nancy, who will, when the candidates have 30 seconds left, she'll hold up a yellow card. It's not very sophisticated, but it works. When the candidate's time is up, she holds up our red card that says "Stop." Candidates, when you see the red card, you know, finish your thought, finish your sentence as quickly as possible. Keeping, respecting the time limits keeps the forum fair. Let's see. Other ground rules for the audience, as always, please silence your cell phones. We, photos and recording by the audience is not permitted tonight. I think we have Asbury Park TV here recording, and that'll be available after the forum. And we also ask you to hold any comments or any applause to the end of the evening. We'll hear from everybody, and then we'll give them a rousing round of applause. Tonight, we are down to two candidates for Mayor. Sonia Mack could not be here, and one of the Council candidates could not be here. And the League of Women Voters, since there are only two candidates for Council, when we're left with one, we cannot moderate a forum like that. That's against our rules, as Polly mentioned. So unfortunately, we will not be able to hear from Angela Abes Anderson. So again, so since we're down to, we have a nice audience here and only two candidates, we can be a little less formal. We're trying out kind of a different format. I have Nina Summerlin from the West Side Citizens United and Daniel Harris from the Second Baptist Church. They're going to be asking the questions. I'll call on them. They'll call, they'll ask their question. I'll call on the candidates, and we'll just, we'll alternate and kind of mix it up when we get to that. So bear with us. We haven't practiced, so we're going to see how this goes. Let's get started. We have two candidates here, Felicia Simmons and John Moore, both running for Mayor. You will be electing one of the candidates for Mayor to a four-year term this November. So opening statements, we already drew for opening statements, and Felicia is going to go first, followed by John. So if you're ready, timer? Yes? Then, and Felicia, you're ready? Take it away, your opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, League of Women Voters, West Side and Second Baptist, for having me this evening. As anyone who knows me knows I can be wrong with it, but that won't be me tonight. I am a two-time elected to the Board of Education, notorial candidate this year, because I feel that it is time for a plan and to not sit back on my laurels. I was told a long time ago not to call myself a troublemaker, but a problem solver. And for the last decade, an almost decade and a half, that's what I feel that I have been doing. I'm a mother of a wonderful, almost 20-year-old son. I am a parent right now of a three-year-old wonderful child and a six-year-old. I take it my responsibility to be a steward of this community. I come with a direct plan on infrastructure, on finances, on taking our city to the 2000s and beyond. Again, I'm going to keep it short, because I'm pretty sure that the questions that you have for me tonight will get to the direct solutions, and I have direct answers for you. So again, thank you, and have a great evening. I'm ready for the debate.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Moore, John, do you want to?
Okay. Yes. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. My name is John Moore, M-O-O-R, M-O-E, M-O-E puts anyone. My great-grandfather moved to Asbury Park in 1888. My grandparents and parents both graduated from Asbury Park High School. Two of my sisters went to Asbury Park High School. I went to Ocean Township High School. But in the '60s, there is no model law, and they wanted a job to work on Asbury Park Boardwalk. So that's where I started off my journey with Asbury Park when I was 13 years old. I worked there. I've lived in the city, basically, my entire life except college years and a couple years I've lived in Jacksonville. Far, I worked for the city for 31 years, starting off as a co-inspector, asked for the motion via Labor, retired as Deputy Director of DPW. I was on the Board of Education from '88 to 2000. I was the Commissioner and Vice Chair to the Asbury Park Housing Authority. I was reading, my parents still live here, my two sisters, the city you've lived in, you should give back to. So I've always tried to give back to the city, and that's basically my introduction. I'm like, Felicia, like, I'm sure the questions will get more into depth as far as issues and everything I've had, but that's basically, John Morris, enjoy the city and enjoy trying to do the best for the city. And that's all we can do. I'm sure Felicia agrees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll start with Nina. We'll ask the first question. Okay. We're going to ask Dan's first question.
Okay. We have a lot of issues with legal on my crime in Asbury Park. So I wanted to know, are you in favor to require police to pay for their own legal counsel once they've been actively charged with assaulting citizens at Asbury Park multiple occasions, or multiple occasions?
All right. Let's start with Mr. Moore.
Okay. If it's legal, absolutely, yes. I'm not sure if it's legal or not legal.
Sweet.
Okay. Well, you know, because you were part of the city a couple years ago, had an Equity Committee where we looked into what was going on. I think that came out very well, and we were looking to do a citizen review board, and that process had early started. The problem with it is the pre-reporter in New Jersey said subpoena powers and basically CRBs are illegal at this point in time. But that Council with others are still looking into this with representatives from all groups, and because when it is legal, we will, I'm in favor of a citizen review board to look at all problems in Asbury Park.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Simmons?
Yes, I am, I am for teaching the community and the police community and helping them, holding them responsible. Looking into CRBs, subpoena power is not legal, but the citizen review board is legal. I've sat with the Attorney General. I've also advocated for police licensing, which will actually help get to the point that I also, licensing of the police, which is just coming to effect through World Day. I'm trying to be brief. It will help with getting directly to the people, because they are supposed to be advocates of us. We are not supposed to be their advocates. They're supposed to be protect us. So it gets right to the bottom of it and put people first, community first, with real answers and solutions.
Okay. Thank you. Nina?
Would you support convening the City of Asbury Park, the School District, and the Housing Authority to work together for the betterment of the community?
Do you want to start again this time?
Yes, I am completely for it. When I was on the Board of Education, I went to the city specifically joining, helping and sharing services, and that probably will help actually bring taxes down and also bring a support to the community. When you have the parents, the community, the city all working together as one entity, then it brings a sense of a self-say-by-self kind of mentality. It helps with, it brings up, it fosters a community. When you have parents in the school, the children are used to, not used to acting in an outward way, but you also get an understanding on how the school district works. You get an understanding on where you can draw cut funds. You get an understanding on how you can run out a complete community where it's not just, we're sitting back looking at these separate entities. The Housing Authority, the School District, the city are all Asbury Park. There are specific forms of Asbury Park that need to be addressed together.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Absolutely. And this question came up at the recent Board of Education debate, and so I looked at it and I kind of said to myself, geez, John, you might have known this in the past. We have tried to meet with separate entities at different times, usually around budgets and stuff like that, which is wrong, I think. And I'll give my pledge, if reelected, I will, being Mayor, be mandated meeting between the three entities, because we're going to sink or swim together. And then, I would see, that would probably be maybe semi-annual, and then after that, we should have a community meeting, probably in the high schools, over the biggest, with all three entities at the table, and then listen to the, say what we did, and then listen to the feedback from the community. Well, how about this? How about that? So it's a great idea. Hasn't been done enough. It's been tried, but Felicia brought it to Council. I wasn't on Council, so, but yes, that needs to be done. We have to work together.
Back to Dan.
Okay. Constantly hear about, should we go on the West Side? There are some, we hear about some of the things that happened on the beachfront area. I wanted to know, are you in favor of us having a weekend court to deal with those who come into Asbury Park to disrupt things on the beach in the downtown area? If we run Friday night to Sunday morning?
Let's start with Mr. Moore.
Okay. What type of court?
Weekend court.
Weekend.
Weekend.
Whenever there's been problems in the summertime, the beachfront or the downtown area, we should put on extra police, and any bars, statues, and if they have bad record, they apply statute. City Council will have to hire extra security, extra policemen. So I would have to look into the, I know it works in some towns. I don't work in Philadelphia. I don't know if I'm working in Asbury Park, but if it's something that works, I would be considerate, absolutely. But I don't think any crimes be inhibited on the East Side, and you know, there's a lot of young people that are just getting out of whack at the other bars, and we as a judge should throw the book out of them. And so all crimes should be dealt fairly across the board with equal punishment for all, all sides of town.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Simmons?
Yes, I am in support of weekend judge, and the way we mandate some of the beachfronts to hopefully pay for the extra police and town, we can mandate to pay for the judge. We have a severe issue with the Tower of Two Cities. Most people didn't know about the police and, what is it? It was a slight fight between residents from the bar until we seen it on YouTube or on Channel 12. Right? I was aware and I live in town, and I feel that I'm up on things. We need to help, hold accountable, everybody accountable, because it feels, the weight feels like it sits on, on the West. And when we shift, we have to shift the Tower of Two Cities to a Tower of One City, where everybody feels equally, equally persecuted and equally justice. So again, we have to make sure that we're safe and that the safety of the whole city is addressed at once. So yes, I am for.
Thank you. Nina?
What are your ideas of improving public safety in our city, especially the gun violence on the West Side?
I guess we'll see who went first last time?
Okay. Well, I can go first. You can go first, yes.
This time. First is we address the Eye of the Sky grant that we received a few years ago and fix the cameras. We have a unique place here in Asbury Park where pretty much the whole city is lined with a fiber that supports cameras and Wi-Fi, and so we have to fix the cameras, because we had a shooting recently in front of the camera, and the camera was broken. That is, I believe, the first thing that should be addressed. The second is, we have to have a shift in our policing. When I say a shift in the policing, I mean walking, talking, congregating, right? Personalities, not a more occupied, but a more part of the community policing. It shouldn't be that on one side, one feels safe, to walk and to be, have a great time, and on the other side, people are scared to leave their households. We have to truly address it.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. Mr. Moore?
Yes. I believe in community policing. I believe we should get more officers out on the streets. I think there's too many officers in city hall and the police department that aren't on the street. So try and push to get, like, we could hire civilians to do records and other jobs that police officers are there, and get more police officers on the street, and police, and community policing, where they should be walking, not driving at 40 miles an hour with a wind blowing down the street. You got to know the community, you got to talk to the community, you got to want to reach out to the community, and the community then will have some love back to the police, which is needed. I also believe that you've done a good job, every now and then a camera goes down, we add cameras all the time, and a shot spot has been great to Asbury Park Neptune, where it triangulates where shots have been fired, and within 30 seconds, a police car can be there. So that was a big addition that, you know, the prosecutor wired, the city funded, Neptune funded. So better community policing, more streets on the beach, and more police walking the beach.
Okay. Thank you. And I think we're with Dan for that question.
Okay. Talk about how they develop identification. How do you plan to help older citizens who are suffering from rising property taxes, even after they pay for their houses, the taxes are actually forcing them out of the city?
I think we'll start with Mr. Moore.
Okay. Well, one thing that the city did as far as taxes, the municipal tax rate, the past, I'm just going to pass four years, I'm not going to say eight years, but the past four years, the levy for the municipal tax rate has dropped $1.3 million. So we've been able to add more social workers, more $100,000, more recreation this year to participate, to our budget for $250,000. Standard raises for all unions, increased benefits by state mandate, which are ridiculous, where the health benefits are going up 20% this year. So, you know, it's, I think we're funding everything as much as possible. It's just like getting to the finish line and crossing the finish line.
Hey, Ms. Simmons?
I think the question is how do we keep seniors in housing?
I'm related to seniors who want to get housing, as their taxes go up.
Yes, the taxes. It's first, I would opt into the pilot program, where we assess every year, but that's, we're already in it, so I wouldn't opt into, I would opt into actually promoting the property fees, where seniors can literally get their taxes if you fall into the criteria, get the property tax fees component, which is an unutilized component used in this town. And also, there are active funds, especially through the coronavirus ARP, where we can do a stabilizing, a one-time treatment, where we stabilize just for this year, or at least, well, from this year to 2024, until where we address. But we truly have to get to the addressing of the assessment of properties every year. That assessment of properties every year only benefit people planning to flip their house, not people planning to stay in their house and make a community. So we have to, places like previously, like New Jersey City, they didn't assess their properties for 20 years. Stop.
Thank you. Back to Nina.
What steps can the city take to reduce homelessness within Asbury Park?
Okay. First is what we did, John adapted a piece and the community pushed a piece is rent control, rent stabilization, right? We have a huge issue here with underdevelopment and overpricing of property. It's just something that will stabilize the heritage of the community. We have people working 40 hours plus a week that are living in their cars, right? Or living on someone's couch, because they literally can't afford an apartment that, say, 40 years ago was $800, now it's $2,400. I get calls all the time where people are regulating prices, and they're going up $400 in one lot, right? Where are we? What kind of city are we promoting to be, right? So first, we can't regulate certain things, but we can go, where we can, where we can go into the meetings where every property here that's a rent, a city of rentals of 80%, we have to address these issues. We have to do all the work.
Okay. And Mr. Moore?
Could you repeat your question, please?
What steps can the city take to reduce homelessness within Asbury Park?
Okay. What we're doing is we did expand our social services department. We have a homeless problem, because we're one of the few towns that has a social services department, where every other town has homeless, and they send to Asbury Park. We met with one agency, I'm not going to say who they are, but so far this year, we've had 180 police calls to their facility about homeless people. So we're addressing it by adding social service workers, and we're addressing it by reaching out to the county, reaching out to the state, where, and you got to look at some of these calls and help us, because free home, you have Montauk County Health Department, you're giving those services to Asbury Park or other towns. Anybody being leased from the hospitals are being sent to Asbury Park. So it's a tough question that we're on top of, but we're getting very little help from people above us, but we're not giving up. We're going to keep on like, hammering on the free home doors, hammering on the assembly people in the center doors. Asbury Park needs help. It's the only town in the county that has social services department.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go back to Dan for a question. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
What do you plan to make sure that affordable housing, that built on the waterfront, that developed area are available to middle-income people?
Affordable housing on the waterfront, in private waterfront redevelopment area, is not able to be done because of the signed agreement from 2002, where instead of them doing affordable housing, the mayor council at the time said, when you hit 300 units, give us a million dollars. When you hit 600 units, give us a million dollars. When you hit 500, 900 units, give us a million dollars, et cetera, et cetera. And that was their affordable housing obligation. Now, that's a signed contract. We've been trying to figure out how to get out of it, and if somebody's in here, it's the developer or the redevelopment, or the work with the Hennigan Hall, suggestions, how do you unilaterally break the contract? Everybody in this room has a deed, a mortgage, anything, you know, you just can't unilaterally say, I'm not going to pay my mortgage anymore. So you can't break the contract if that's both sides are willing to, and right now, the other side is not willing to redo that contract.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
So go back to, this is a question that's been floating around a long time, especially when we were doing the inclusionary zoning in Stockton. We spoke to, I believe, this fish firm, and he, and he's told in Asbury Park Press and in the Starleture saying that he was never asked about affordable housing on the beach. So first, we have to have the ask. We have to, we are not, when they signed the contract, I believe they're in an impoverished mindset, that they were just happy to have someone coming to town. But me being a lifer here already knew the value of Asbury Park. So we have to get out of that impoverished mindset and hold people to the fire, right? They receive tons of abatements, 30-year tax abatements, this kind of abatement, this kind of deal, and we're saying, okay, if we're going to get these kind of deals, then you can have to give something back directly to the community. Like, just recently, when there, I was watching the city, the 48 townhouses that they're putting on Bradley Cove, right, that they're building, the city had to give $10,000 to, we could ask for housing instead. So I have this house, so I can go on and on, but again, it's behalf, because we don't ask. We don't, we don't.
That's what I'll be for Nina, and I'll start with Ms. Simmons.
What would you propose to do as Mayor or Councilman? This is for Andrew to think about, too, in the next round. About aggressive driving in Asbury Park?
Oh, just sitting back in, actually, that was Polly and actually sitting in the meeting that we had the other day, living here on the streets, is first advertise that we are under, you know, surveillance, and then second, maybe put up some of these zonings, but promote the culture of biking, fix the infrastructure in the streets, right? Put up tons of signage, or throughout the entire town, right? Go over a full plan of transportation and sidewalks and throughout the entire community. It has to be addressed. I see it doing in spot pieces, and I know for a fact that there are millions of dollars to do a complete plan, and just push the, I'm looking for the word, but I'm, just push the agenda that we are a safe, biking, community-friendly city. I'm from Asbury, I walk in the street, right? I shouldn't be scared that the car is going to whip around the corner and take me out.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yes, speeding and reckless driving in Asbury Park is citywide. It's such as one area, I believe, again, it should be zero tolerance. It should be like, deal hours, you're going 26 miles an hour, you're going to get pulled over, you're going to get a ticket, no warnings. I think we're too lenient as far as warnings, as far as supply for grants, to help Polly and people, we've provided many grants. Past Capitol meeting, we located $680,000 grant for Asbury Avenue Bike Way project, $45,000 project for the intersection at Sheffield's and the Mill School, to upgrade those intersections for safe routes to schools and everything. So any grant out there, we're actively looking for, the 3rd and 4th Avenue, they started off with roundabouts, but there weren't roundabouts. You picture roundabouts that were painted in the middle of the street. So that's being redone, and I think people will like to compromise this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go back to a question from Dan, and we'll start with Mr. Moore.
I want to put up here a call on, on the meeting, on what's in, what's in driving, and Asbury, how do we deal with, how can the Council, working with the police department, the Public Safety Director, Chief of Police, plan to, you know, young men doing donuts in the middle of the street right now and burning out, and every time the speaker's repaid, we see tire mops there? How can we get funding to put more speed bumps in Asbury Park, especially on the West Side, where people just recklessly vibe all the time?
Yeah, but it's, I think it's an issue with the entire town. Speed bumps aren't that expensive, but I think part of the problem is, we talk about it here, and then it gets lost with other things, maybe bigger, but it's important things. So I think the more people that complain, it's like anything else, the squeaking wheel gets aggressive, the more complaints we get, the quicker we are. Everybody says, well, we got the rubber speed bumps on Third and Fourth, and we take them up in order time. To me, that's totally ridiculous. When Neptune has the McCaddan ones, they're there. When Neptune has the McCaddan ones, they're there 12 months a year, but Asbury Park can't figure out how to do that, which again, we set policy, day-to-day decisions, but again, so hopefully two other council people will agree. Let's start putting down real speed bumps. We have the trails with the radar. Unfortunately, you can't give a ticket out with traffic lights, New Jersey ruled that illegal. I wish they would bring that back so we could give out tickets with the cameras that we have.
Thank you, Simmons.
The answer to that question is, it's twofold. So I'm going to try to be quick. First, the reason why the kids are feeling out in the streets is because they have nothing to do. So in the midst of that is the trafficking in this is promoting a culture. We have the cops that they know it's on the corner, the community cops and community things. And we have to, we have to address those different components. But also, we have to promote a city, again, of safety, of entirety, right? I've been looking for a speed bump on Summerfield Avenue, the street behind, the street behind Fields Avenue, where the school is. For the last few years, I've been waiting in front of the mayor and asking for speed bumps as children play, right? In all these spaces where you ask these are where children play. They're on the streets, so it should be a priority. We are neglecting half of the city in the midst of this development and cannot afford to because we lose lives that way. We run into corners, we, I have to stop. But again, I'll try to be less lenient.
You're doing fine. Maybe we'll ask the next question, starting, you'll have another chance to talk. What are your ideas for providing our children with a safe place to play and learn after school? Since we don't have a community center?
Oh, well, that's great. Great, I'll start with that question because I just became the president of the West Side Community Center, which is, I literally been a few weeks, and which is in need of some help. Again, we get trapped in violence, we've been from here, trapped in violence from when it's become out of, you know, out of play. Where there's no place for the children to go, there's no place where the after-school programs, there's no place to congregate, there's no place to play basketball, there's no place to be. And as a person who grew up there, finding religion there, enjoying after-school with people ballet, computers, that is needed. And as I become mayor, I'm going to hopefully score, and even if I don't, four points to let people know that we have that space. It is needed, it's needed specifically for the whole city, but specifically for the West Side.
Thank you, and Mr. Moore?
Right, there's a couple of ways we can address this. Pine Street on the east side shuts down Pine Street between 3rd and 2nd every Friday and then the kids play. So another street on the northeast, southwest side, we're asked to do the same thing, we will do that. Like I said, we added $100,000 this year to the city's recreation department to do more things at the Boys and Girls Club, which is an excellent facility, but we do need, I'm glad, West Side Community Center is coming back, I hope it does. The city will totally support that. Boys and Girls Club does a great thing. We run an excellent summer recreation program between the city and the school, where the school takes the children in the morning and then the afternoon to recreation. So that's an excellent program, by the best in the county, it's not by the best in the state. But again, there's another street, someplace in the city like Pine Street, where a group of parents want to get together and say, hey, can we shut down the street every Friday so children can play? We will do that right away. Again, hopefully, West Side Community Center will be back. It's totally need, anything the city can do to help that, all files, we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan will ask the next question to Mr. Moore.
Hey, I'm talking about public space, city parks. How would we propose to make those public spaces safer for our children? You know, we can say we want to open up an area for them to play, but how can we make those areas safer, I want to see a child playing and then get off a trail and shop?
Well, I've never heard in any instance the name of the city parks, be it Springwood Park or Sunset Park, or any park where we've had any problems so far. Not from within the city. As far as public spaces with the street, when they shut it down, they have two police officers there. So again, shut down the street is done, but the police officer each end. So no cars can go down, so the children will put in jeopardy. You know, anything could happen at any place, we've seen that in too many cities. Start off with like Connecticut and go to Texas and everything. A shooting could happen anytime, anyplace, there's just too many guns on the streets and everything. So it's got to be stopped and that's more at the state and federal level, where they have to look into gun control and look at some of the laws. Like, yes, recently, the state of New Jersey, see if they, are they actually working? Where now you cannot, if you arrest somebody for anything, they're out of the next step.
And Simmons? Can you repeat the full question again? Because that is a full question that I want to use.
Okay, you talk about putting our young people in public spaces to play. I'm all for that. And I respect the fact that Mr. Moore, you know, you talk about police being in these areas, but I've never seen a police move by the public shower with the kids, have a water park. And then they just out there playing. So how would we propose to keep everybody safe throughout the entire city? And then put in the public space?
Again, so I think I got the whole question. So the answer to that question is again, attention on having real community policing and real community. Something great that happened a couple of years ago, where we didn't have the policing that we needed at the basketball court when we had issues. And there was a shooting over there and a shooting across the street from Springwood Park, two times. We had men show up and take turns on the court to watch the children and watch the community. I think that's an important vitamin, right? That team with the policing community, the de-escalation training that the attorney general was so graciously, that specifically asked Asbury Park to take part in, right? De-escalated training that's coming through different organizations in town are specifically needed to have a community in a confused police department. And also just having friends like the state trooper, chief of police, who have programs that actually can bring into the community to keep our kids safe and our community tapped into the bigger picture.
Thank you. Nina, do the next question and start with Miss Simmons. When do you see opportunity to reduce bureau costs and taxes?
That is a great, we have so many joints or triple services. So we say specifically in the city, going back to the fact that we have a school and a housing department, so policing and training and security. Then we can also go across from our DEW, right? Where he used to work, we have a great department there. But we also have like the city, you know, we do the same shadow in the housing department, we do the same shadow in the school department. There are tons of fact in the city and opportunities for grants that we do not apply for. We're the only urban seat in Monmouth County, Asbury Park and its entirety is the only urban seat in Monmouth County. I mean, any federal dollar for any urban initiative can, has to come if it comes. It has to come to Asbury Park. So in that means, that means that we are not an impoverished city, but we are as a city that doesn't have a full-out plan.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Moore?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
When do you see opportunities to reduce bureau costs and taxes? City costs, sorry.
City costs.
City costs. Well, like I said, we reduced the tax levy, municipal tax levy in 2019 from $16,950,000 to $2022,000, to $15,619,000, which is a $1.331 million reduction, which is 8%. Because it's unheard of in most towns. And I'm just adding everything to it. I disagree with Felicia's, that Asbury Park's only urban city. As city only urban mayor's committee, Asbury Park is an urban city. So Neptune, Sunset, All Ranch, those few towns are never on the calls. And I learned a lot from Mayor Newark, the mayor of Paris, and the mayor of Camden and everything. And we kept monthly calls with the governor's office and everything. We do learn a lot there. But continue to reduce the tax rate. Eventually, the city's been tightening the belt because of the terrible S2 law and order of patients stuck. So we've been tightening our belt as much as possible, but one day, that belt may not be able to be tightened too much more. So we have to get a change from our legislators on the S2 bill, which is killing the school system.
Okay, thank you. Dan, another question?
Yeah.
We'll have a few more.
Found on the front of experience with large budgets and fiscal responsibility. And I said...
I didn't hear you.
Found on the experience with large budgets and fiscal responsibility. And I said, wasting money.
It's fair on how you are fiscally responsible.
Well, I think the governor said three times, we've been able to reduce the tax levy by $1.3 million over 40 years, the municipal tax levy, and still add a participatory budget this year for $250,000, $100,000 for recreation, many other new programs. You know, last year, we hired another social worker to help the police department. So when there's a police call, it's not just the police department going out, it's a social worker, Reasia, who goes out. We increased departments that needed to be increased, being COVID, being social services, to hit the needs. We're working with preferred behavioral health through the social services department. We reach out to fulfill, to help with things. We give our money to Habitat to fix houses and we give money to CARC, C-A-R-C, to help people with their grants, with their utility bills and all the payments needed to survive.
Okay, thank you, Simmons.
So fiscally responsible. I haven't been on the council yet, hopefully soon. But when I was on the Board of Education, at the time of which I came on, we talked about how big our budget was, how big our legal department was, our policies and deficiencies. And along with other board members, we, in those years that we were there, our budget came down significantly over a billion dollars. I remember in a specific meeting, we cut a budget, we cut a needed position that had no teacher contact time, had no student contact time. But yet in that specific meeting, that position was over $700,000. So just in that, just having that kind of tooth and, what is it? Tooth and comb kind of policy, right? And attention to the budget, real attention to the budget, which is the need assessment of the community compared to the need assessment of administration. We are severely administratively heavy in all parts of the city. And we have to make sure that we are very fiscally responsible in that way to address it.
Okay, thank you. We are back, I think, to Nina and starting with Simmons. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing Asbury Park now? And how to address it?
Uh, please.
All right, I think it's a case. Oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
I was about to take a sip.
You usually jump right in, so.
I usually do. I just try to get one. But I feel the biggest is lack of equity and accountability. When you have a lack of equity, when you don't see value in every part of the city and every person in the city, you can't really see the needs of the people in the city. So you can't truly address it. So we can talk about the violence, right, which is huge. We can talk about the lack of economy here, which is huge. We can talk about the lack of housing, which is gigantic, right? We can talk about all those things, but it all goes down to the lack of equity that we have with every resident of this city. We have to pay attention to the residents here and the needs of the residents in the community as a whole before we can address any of these specific needs, right? We don't see that for homeless person across the street. We don't see that, that person who's working three jobs. We don't see that person who is just trying to make it from day to day and we don't give them value, right? Every person in every part of the city has value.
And thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay, Asbury Park right now is facing many challenges, some of them might even compare to others. We have to build a new firehouse, that's definite, and that's going to be very costly. We have problems with the sewer plant, that's going to be costly. We need to continue to address affordable housing. We need to continue to address workforce development. We need to continue to address the opioid epidemic, which is terrible. It's not in Asbury Park, county, state, country. The most important thing to me right now is the violence in the city. And we have to address that violence through our own policing. And then again, we still have to reach out to the county and the state because personally, I think some of the laws that the state put in are too lenient. And like, there's, someone could have 20 warrants, but as long as they're under $400, they cannot be stopped or like, so maybe these policies will work or maybe they're not. But I think they should be resuscitated to see if the police have enough fuel behind them to stop some of the violence.
How do you come to begin? I think this is the last one from the bank. Start with Mr. Moore?
Why am I running for mayor? Why am I running for mayor? I love this city. I love every aspect of the city. Anybody who knows me will say, even everybody in this room will say, if you've seen John on the east, north, southwest side, John doesn't, not the beating, John doesn't... You'd never have to guess where John was coming from. I tell you how I feel, you disagree with me. And I know I've made some mistakes throughout the course, which I think every government, city, state, federal, going back to Roman times, agreed. I don't know one government that's never made a mistake. I think we're very transparent in favor of taking the baby. Let's fix it, this will be wrong, and let's make sure we don't make that same mistake twice. Why am I running? I love the city. This will be my last venture and running. This will be my last campaign. And I would just like to finish some of the things that I've seen start.
Thank you, Brad, and Simmons.
I'm running for campaign because I feel that my vision is needed. I say to people all the time, if we don't see what you want, they see, then you have a responsibility to give a seat. I have a long, new plan. And I see the entirety of the city. I feel that there is no part of the city that is unvalued and doesn't have equity. When we talk about future plans and projections and friends and responsibilities, I take responsibility to help with the city, no matter what. So a future plan for infrastructure, future plan for COVID. We are in real life, people are dying left and right. And we have to take responsibility for our community. And to sit back and to wait for someone else to take responsibility. I'm 23 years old. Again, I've been in this political life for over 15 years. So I was young when I started. And again, I have a responsibility to the community to roll out infrastructure help and bring it. So that's why I feel that I'll be a great seat, a great person for this seat.
Okay, thank you. I think this will be your last question. Nina's going to pose it, starting with you, Simmons. So you're awesome. What are your ideas to better engage and communicate with residents on important issues within the community?
Oh, that's great. That's part of my plan, if you go to felicia Simmons for AsburyPark.com, you see that part of the plan that I have put out, this is small piece, is to engage in community meetings on a regular basis throughout the city, right? To speak to all points of the city. Again, I go back to the word equity, right? Every person has value and every person has an opinion. I did a clothes drive, clothes giveaway on Saturday. And people came out their way to tell me their views on policing, their views on homelessness, their views on just life, food, groceries, canals, jobs. You have to be in the community to hear those things. And you have to be other than you to hear those things. It is different when somebody tells you something. Like I had a young lady come to me and say, why do the other side hate me so much? I said, they don't hate you, just this and see, right? They don't see that part of life. And you have to understand that sometimes we go through our day-to-day and we get into our own routines. It's not that we black out the world, it's just that we go through our daily routine. And you have to stop and make sure that you see everybody listening and bring it to them, not just sit back and go.
Nina, just repeat the question, please.
What are your ideas to better engage and communicate with residents on important issues within our city?
issues within our city?
Okay, I think one we touched on earlier, as far as like the joint reading between the Board of Education, the Housing Authority, the Council, at least seven annually, and then having a city hall meeting, at the high school private, we need the biggest space going where community come, and we can have that dialogue. Also, you know, we, we have quite a few committees in Asbury Park, and the committees, some of the most important committees, like planning and zoning are more important than mayor and council times, and we've kept seats open, opened more minorities, put a pocket seats in, so we're having a tough time for minorities to come forward to apply for some committees, so again, maybe that's something we have to do a better job reaching out on. I mean, we've been to, been to the churches, we've been to all the community events, and we've advertised this, like, you know, please come out, get involved, uh, I guess that's all we gotta keep on doing, and just keep on backing the drum, and try to get people to cut, give back to the city, because the city's giving so much to them, so I think the biggest thing is the three entities come together and have that one big meeting and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questioners, you did a great job, candidates and audience, you gave us great questions. Uh, we'll now go to the candidates' closing statements, one minute each. I believe we're gonna start with Mr. Moore, and then Miss Simmons.
Okay, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Monmouth County, Asbury Park Complete Streets Foundation, the moderators, Ann, Nina, and Dan, and Black Bird Community Committee, for letting us use this great venue. And this is a great venue, hopefully everybody out in TV land sees it, and books it, gives up some business, because great venue, underused, please reach out to them, just great people. Amanda Fitzpatrick, I'll give her a plug. Yeah, I'm running for reelection, I said it, I love the city, I think I've done a decent job, have I been perfect? Absolutely not. I'd like to meet the person who's been perfect. Uh, I think we've been responsive to criticism, have changed some things, what needed to be changed, we will continue to do that, and I promise just to try and do my best and listen to everybody. Private only mayor puts their home phone number on their business card, and I encourage people to call me, to talk to me. A lot of people think mayor and council knows everything going on in the city, sometimes for the last ones to hear, so please feel free to reach out. John Moore, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Miss Simmons?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, uh, with questions. I, I always enjoy, um, being able to come in front of everybody and concede. Um, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everybody who is supporting me, thank you for everybody who's coming out to pay, um, attention to this, um, mid-year election, that's just important. We are in a real time. We are not in a time where we can sit back, COVID, in these last few years, I've shown you, we cannot, uh, afford to go back into a shell. We have to be aggressive with our plans to go forward. Um, I feel that I am the person to go forward with that plan. Um, I have connections throughout the state, um, and friends that will bring back a select program to appeal, and infrastructure, and, and pipe us in to the place in which we need to be. I enjoy, um, the people of this community, I am the people of this community, and I look forward to, um, serving the community in the future. So again, I could be wrong with it, but again, thank you, thank, thank everybody, and have a wonderful next year, and see you soon.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time to give the candidates a round. Questioners, and Polly, and, you know, everybody else behind the scenes, so thank you all. Polly, does it work now?
Just a quick announcement, and thank you again, we won't thank one another, thank it off, but again, thank you all for being here. Can I just have a show of hands, how many saw email, and that's how you got here? Not so many? Uh, social media, mostly? No, how? Word of mouth?
Word of mouth.
Okay, so someone saw something, so somebody, I just want to make sure that you all, that you will stay tuned, um, Asbury Park Complete Streets, Facebook, if you're on social media and Instagram, that's where I start out blasting these events. We verify that we will have another forum, I just want to make sure that you all, and if you tell two friends, and that person tells two friends, and you have an even greater turnout, I don't know that, well, they've been in this room, and again, lots more people, but thank you, Black Bird Community Committee, for hosting this one. Please stay tuned, uh, and also, if anyone has any questions, you can email, uh, AsburyParkCompleteStreets@gmail.com, apcompletestreets@gmail.com. So have a great evening, and thank you all again.
Uh, go ahead, before you all run off, I want to, I want to have the last word, sorry. Just a few words about voting. I know you're here, so you're voters, but, um, there's still, there's still a week for anybody who isn't a voter to get registered, the deadline is October 18th. Uh, remind you, there are three ways to vote this year, you can vote by mail, uh, there is a drop box, that's the easiest way, there's a drop box at the city hall, I live outside. Uh, and plus, you can use, there are 35 drop boxes throughout the county, you can use any one that's convenient for you. Uh, you can, of course, put it in the mail, or deliver it directly to the election office. You can vote in person early, that starts on October 29th, the Saturday, comes through November 6th, the Sunday. It's, um, 10 to 6 on Sundays, 10 to 8 every other day, and there are 10 locations around Monmouth County, you can go to any one that's convenient for you, maybe one near where you work, or wherever, uh, maybe the closest one to Asbury is in Neptune, the Neptune Center. And, you know, of course, you can vote on Election Day, and that's Tuesday, November 8th, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh, your sample ballot is mailed out probably next week, so be a voter, bring a friend, bring lots of friends, all right? And you have some great candidates here for mayor. I'm sorry we didn't get to hear everybody tonight, but, but as far as, there may be another chance.
Please stay tuned, talk to one another if you have any questions, if you want to make any complete streets, not work.